We got good.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the twenty sixth special meeting of council. Mayor Sewell is unable to attend. I will call the meeting to order. Can I have a mover please? Councilor record and second please. Uh, councilor Slicker. Adoption of the agenda, it was all that council adopted the agenda and amend amended following additions. And that would be delegation from her base, Mike Dudik and Steve Blaney, they're right in front of us. Okay, go ahead.
Edition if you don't mind.
You didn't move her in the center, okay. Go ahead.
I would like to have John Q added to the in camera question, please.
John Q to the. You need a mover in second or first? Okay mover please, sure. Okay, so be it, John Q be added to the.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. I'd also like to add in camera if we needed on road tenders. Just to present and talk about pricing and tendering and that because it is a contract pricing. So I like to, if we do need to talk about it's on the agenda for in camera. Okay, so then we have two extra things on the camera then. Hey, you go ahead.
Sort of in the secondary for that.
The secondary place. As Lermondor and also people who are, we're going to forego the landing acknowledgement. Uh, this is a really a continuation of the August twenty sixth special. Or the August twelfth meeting that we had. Hey, go ahead. Oh, Brian.
Oh, yeah. Uh, on my favor.
All in favor, great. Okay, what we have in front of us is we have a delegation. Dudik and Steve Blaney from from her, her, it's the base, AP company, I believe. Go ahead, folks.
Okay, so yeah, uh, thank you for that. Thank you for having us here. My name is Mike Duick. I am with Herc Base. Um, we are a cement soil stabilization company operating out of Stanley, Manitoba, here locally in the province. Um, and then beside me is Steve Lani. Maybe you want to do your own introduction?
I'm, uh, I, I worked with Maple Leaf Construction thirty five years. I ran the country operation and I've been on the Manitoba chapter of Canadian Public Works for the last twenty years. I was president for Canadian Public Works nationally. And on that board of directors for seven years on American Public Works Board of Directors for four or five years. So infrastructure and road building, it's kind of my forte and I very much enjoy it.
Safe to, safe to say. So I wasn't sure what to expect in this meeting, what your guys' expectations are, if you want a full on presentation. I understood from Trevor that there were some questions as a, as a result of the RFP you guys put out that we were awarded, but then halted just due to some questions or whatever. So if there's questions, I'm happy to perform this as a Q and A.
Yeah, you remember, I keep, so, so we want to know more about the company. So we're, we're good if you're prepared for for a presentation. We'd like to uh, to inform council about the company, some of the places that you've worked, how your product works, those type of things.
For sure.
If you can do that.
Uh, so.
There will be questions after.
For sure. So in terms of presentation, I don't know what the setup is. You look pretty highly technical. Is there a way I can run a presentation to the monitors or no?
Definitely, yeah, I can forward the Zoom link and we could get that set up to be screen shared.
We can do it that way for sure. That will, that will help. With that being said, I presume there's a Wi-Fi network I'll need to hop on. Or I'm guest Wi-Fi. Does someone know the password for that?
Here it comes. Uh, we have here will do. Also need your email address so that I can send you the Zoom link.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, and then I can forward that on too. Perfect. Let's make sure that connects here. I'll make sure you're connected here before I, before I walk away and leave.
My capital, not currently.
There we go. We'll use that one. Then I'll quickly send you the Zoom link here and then we'll get you to just share any material you have. Uh, yeah. Yeah, I've just sent you the link. Just give it a minute there to join and then I'll let you into the meeting once you've got that and then we should be good to go. Hey, link is here.
Do I need to connect to video or audio or?
Uh, no, and you have your microphone off muted, please. Yeah, so there's no echo. There we go, I see it there. Okay, and you're good to share whenever you're ready.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, then we're, then we're good. Thanks for your patience there, guys. Um, so working, you guys see it? Oh, a little bit of a delay there. But anyway, okay, so welcome to today's discussion about Herc Base hosted by myself, Mike Duick. Um, some of this, okay, so some of the stuff you asked for, obviously I didn't know. Um, so I'm going to start with the company introduction. Herc Base is a part of the Precision Land Solutions Group of Companies. If you guys have done any drain tiling in the, in your history or whatever, then you've probably been familiar with our company. Um, it is Precision Land Solutions is their, is their mothership. They do drain pallet for fields and egg, egg projects all over the place, but also have a pretty decent history in doing it along road sides and other roadside projects. Um, earth moving service drainage and all that kind of thing. So Herc Base is a, is a, a company under, underneath that umbrella. So what Herc Base is, is it's not just a product, but a process in which we provide um, the service and the product. So it's not, uh, here the product you install it, it's that we're providing the whole, the whole package. Um, and it's aimed at solving infrastructures, most persistent problems, which is, which is failures of subgrade. So it's not so common that asphalt fails. It's more common that asphalt looks like it's failing because a result of the subgrade beneath it. Um, so if you guys are familiar with Magnum, which I know that you are, then a lot of this presentation may sound very much like a mirror. A lot of our, our, our claims to fame are very similar to theirs, but we do things in a little bit of a different manner. But that being said, so we're, we're looking to improve base stability, um, extend the infrastructure lifespan and reduce the construction and maintenance costs. Um, my goal today, whether it's ambitious or not, um, to explain the details of who we are and what we do, answer the questions and see if we can get back on track to the, uh, to the tender or the RFP that was, that was issued a few, a few weeks back. So, um, kind of like I mentioned there, when, when roads fail specifically in Manitoba, it's usually a symptom of, of the subsurface due to weak soils or insufficient stabilization, excess moisture being a major component in that. Um, those issues resolve in frost heaves, often referred to as frost boils in this province, rutting, and then like I said, it can look like the asphalt's failing. Um, but that's just a result of, of what's underneath it. Um, the results of that are just increased costs, um, and maintenance and safety issues, whether it's bumps or ruts or holes, whatever the case is, and unhappy constituents or taxpayers as, as a result. Uh, so the traditional solutions being patches or overlays or chip seal or whatever it may be. Um, they're, they're considered Band-Aids to, to a bigger problem. So we're here to, we're here to solve that. Um, and then move forward with it, especially in Manitoba again, where our, our weather plays a pretty big role in how long and how well our roads will hold up. Uh, so work base, what it is, it's an engineered soil stabilization agent that chemically and mechanically transforms the subgrade materials. Now, there's a lot of big words there, but basically what, what Herc Base is, is it's an ingredient that we add to just two other ingredients. So it's a very simple mix as to what we're doing here. We take cement and we take water and we mix them together and then we add Herc Base to it. So Herc Base is this secret sauce, as you may call it, or a special ingredient or whatever that allows us to do this process as a slurry. So when we're talking about competition or other people doing this, cement soil stabilization isn't new. Um, it's been around for a hundred plus years. What's new is the ability to do it as a slurry rather than a dry powder. There's some drawbacks to doing it as a dry powder and some, some really strong, um, whatever the opposite is pros, I guess, um, to doing it as a, as a slurry rather. So wind and um, even some rain or whatever doesn't, doesn't slow us down. Um, we can, we can keep moving and there's no issue of, um, whatever you want to call it, let's call it, uh, equal friendly initiatives that you may have. We're not, we're not getting dust all over the place. It's not blowing around. It's, it's put in place as a, as a slurry. Um, so moving on from that, there's some imagery here that's kind of showing you what this process looks like. That red truck with the green back is, is something we call Rosie. Um, that's just the, the nickname for it, but, uh, we're talking about how it works. And I have a little video that'll kind of show you some examples of it. Uh, from a job we just did a few weeks back, just a couple neighboring arms over in the arm Springfield. Uh, but anyway, um, so what we do with the process looks like is the first thing we do is we go to a road. Um, this road here, for instance, is one of the ones on your, on your RFP. What we would do after all the lab work is done. Um, if we run through it with a pulverizer, a pulverizer is basically, if you're unfamiliar, just a really big tiller essentially. Um, that's the easiest way to understand it. Anyway, there'll be some imagery of that as well. Um, is then injected with cement as to the picture in the right. This is our, that's what our slurry looks like. That's what the injection wagon looks like. Um, after that, we're adjusting moisture levels as to whatever was determined in the lab, um, as a result of the, the proctor. Um, and then we are running that same pulverizer again, that gives everything a nice thorough mix altogether. It also does some, uh, some, some chemical, um, action that I can explain a little bit later on. Um, in regards to what the Herc Base does with cement and all that, uh, all that. And then, uh, after that, after it's been, after it's been injected and mixed thoroughly, then it is shaped and compacted to, to specs or whatever the, whatever the ratings are uh, that were, that were in any RFP given. Um, now let's see if this video will play. So this video was made by myself with clips that I never intended to use in a sales presentation. So pardon me for most of them being vertical, just iPhone shots. But I thought, uh, it's just yesterday I made this video. I thought it made sense to give you guys some imagery as to what this process looks like. There is volume, but we'll just, it's not playing very smoothly over this. But that is the pulverizer. So that is, uh, that was just very, like I said, in Oakbank, that is a four inch lift of really hard old asphalt. And this would be, it was playing smoothly. You get a better idea as to what the soil was, but it was turned into a really nice workable soil where we combine the existing asphalt with a portion of the base layer. That what you're seeing there now is, uh, is the injection process into that, into that soil. Then, just like I said earlier, then we run that pulverizer again to give everything a thorough, thorough mixture. Now is what that process is. And I don't know if I have clips coming. Yeah, there we go. Then there's a clip coming of the, of the packing process after it's being shaped and graded to, uh, whatever it is, two, three degrees, wherever, wherever it is you want to be. And that's kind of the finished product for the base. And then again, the base is never a finished product on its own. It gets covered by asphalt or gravel in some situations or concrete or whatever the case may be. It's too bad that video didn't play a little nicer than that. Now, um, so Herc Base has, has been around the, this, this, uh, chemical or this additive was invented in two thousand and one. It's been in, used in Manitoba since two thousand and fourteen. Um, lab tests and infield CBR proctor testing show significant gains and load bearing capacity. That's kind of what we're shooting for. So big, big upheave in, in native strength. Um, it's, it's, I don't know how to explain it. It's, it's, we're mixing cement with, with the existing soil, right? So we all understand what cement does. Um, so it's, we're mixing cement with that and bringing that, that strength to, to the native soil that may be failing. Um, so what happens with that is it ends up being a reduced cracking and rutting in your asphalt, uh, resistance to frost healing and soft spots. And then, uh, the, the cool claim we can make is that we are an approved product with, with MTI. They actually did a really neat and interesting study on, uh, on what we do with, uh, with quite, quite good reviews.
And, and that's interesting because MTI usually, it's pretty hard to get on their approved list.
That's correct. So that's, that's true. So it is quite rewarding having that done. That is an accomplishment. Getting them to buy it is a whole nother can of worms, but we're, we're working well through it and we're, we're working with them actually right now for a project that may or may not go on this fall yet. We'll see what kind of timeline has and how nice Mother Nature is to us all. But, um, to summarize their, their whole take on us, this is the best soil stabilization technique they've seen. And what it accomplishes on, on this particular, um, report or study that they did is that for seventy five percent of traditional costs and in twenty five percent of the time, we accomplish better results. So it's truly a case of more for less, which is every salesman's dream, I think.
And MTI with my past work experience with Maple Leaf, I dealt a lot with highways and, um, with their labs and everything. And we worked on a lot of special projects, whether it was, uh, cement stabilization, uh, warm mix asphalt. We did the first one in Manitoba, which has proved fantastic. It's, it's helped everybody through the fall seasons and everything. You're able to mix asphalt at colder temperatures, still get the compaction. Um, but the cement stabilization, we've gone through, um, in my past history with Maple Leaf, we've gone through the dry powders, the, um, the pubmilled, um, cement stabilized gravel and everything. But out of all my experience, Herc Base is the better of any product I've seen. And you're not, you're not mixing dry powder and powder going anywhere and everywhere. And, and arsenic isn't, is in cement and you don't want that finer.
No, you don't want that. Whether it be farmers concerned about cattle or whatever, people just concerned about getting cement powder on their vehicles.
First, cement powder on parking lots close by.
Right.
We had that instance once.
Yeah, that can, that can be an issue. Uh, so yeah, so we have, we have some cool stuff going on that way. Um, that little badge there. The twenty twenty two MGRA awards thing, we can't take all the credit for it, but we were involved in a, a priority grain route road for the RM of Rhineland. Uh, you're asking for references or who we've done work for kind of a thing. So the RM of Rhineland is a big fan. We've done quite a bit of work with them. They ended up winning a, a few awards through, uh, the Better Roads Association. Uh, again, we're not entirely to, uh, to give credit to. That road was, was Precision Land Solutions largely. But what that road was is it was, uh, it was Herc based and it was drain tiled on both sides and it was a concrete road on top. But this is a heavy, like I said, a heavy haul, heavy duty, high priority grain route. Um, and they, they, they won us most improved road as, as a result of that design. And that road's been around for a couple of years now and I don't think there's a crack in it.
No, there isn't. And that was a project that I was looking after and that was a federally and provincially funded grant. Um, it's five million dollar grant that the Rhineland got. Um, that, that road is, uh, used with B trains hauling fertilizer and seed and everything in the spring before the frost is out during the frost, um, coming out and there's not a crack in it.
So.
Um, is that a Matt Good Roads award? Is that what that, they won from Manitoba Good Roads?
Uh, Manitoba Good Roads Association, yeah.
Now you're on.
Yeah, but they would have entered the road as a, as a rebuilt road. Yeah.
Yeah, so that was. Did you work with Mike Neal and guys like that?
Well, I'm on the board. I do the judge.
Okay, so Bob Amadja?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, perfect. So that's good. And then I know because it's not in the following slide, just more on, on references and places we've done work. Most recent, obviously, is just that job a couple of weeks back, which was in, in Oakbank area. We did a couple handful of jobs in with the RM Springfield. Obviously, we've done Rhineland, uh, more slotted for next year. Uh, Stanley's done over five kilometers of it. Uh, we've done work in Desalavery, um, as far east as Cirrus. And the numbers are, the numbers are coming in quicker and faster than, than ever. Uh, I'd like to add St. Addis to that list if at all possible. Um, so environmental, um, advantages, this part's going to be very similar to, to things you've heard of from, from competition there. So the simplicity of the process reduces the amount of material that would other, otherwise need to be hauled in and out of a job site. So one of our main priorities here, the reason this is, uh, such a coveted product these days or a way of doing things is traditional formats require you to excavate. I'll just make up some numbers here, but maybe three or two or four feet of your road, haul that material away and haul in the to, to replace that material. And all that hauling is a time killer and a budget killer. That really, really could slow you down and hurt your budget. So what we're trying to do is leave all the material there. You've already invested a good amount of money and time and effort into this road. Our efforts are to leave that right where it is and just enhance it. So if we can reduce your budget costs, whatever your budget may be, that you can get more roads done in a year with your current budget or you can use your current budget only and, or sorry, use less than your current budget and relocate that money elsewhere. Service vehicle or some fleet or whatever the case is. But, um, so if removing and replacing thirty centimeters, so, um, of aggregate on, on a seven point six meter road, these just kind of averages um, from a green initiative, you're looking at saving ninety metric tons per kilometer. Uh, so that's just something good. You can say you're doing for, for the environment and all that. So there's assumptions made with, with that type of the claim, but we, we list them as to not hide anything there. So that part's all good. Um, liquid injection, we kind of went over that. Uh, we're greatly reducing the dust from any dry powder, uh, opportunities or, um, other options there. And then we're reducing, reducing water usage, which is made. So we're not reinventing construction as a whole, but we are dramatically improving roads while doing some pretty important and pretty critical things being saving natural resources. Um, I say that, um, sometimes I get questioned on it. And I don't need to be dramatic. We're not running out of gravel, for instance, but if you've watched your gravel costs over the years, they've likely only gone up. And yeah, inflation's a thing, but the reality is there. Gravel is, it's still out there, but the easy to access gravel is getting less and less easy to access. So as a result, the cost goes up. So if we can reduce the amount of gravel needed, we can reduce the cost and, uh, incurred in, in managing roads, which is a big part of what you guys do. Um, so again, we're also minimizing total labor and project duration. So, uh, like I said, it's Manitoba highway or Manitoba highways words. Seventy five percent reduction in time. Um, that's, that's a big deal when it comes to the constituents of your taxpayers, your residents, guys. Um, having construction in front of their homes or whatever, um, to greatly reduce that, that timeframe is, uh, is very compatible in, in positive ways. And of course, we're lowering.
How long does this stuff take to cure?
Twenty four hours, but that being said, that's until we allow, um, some type of, uh, traffic on it. Well, I guess we allow some traffic on it almost immediately, but that's until it's like relatively cured. That being said, it is still a cement and as a result, just like any given cement, um, cement gets harder over time, whether it be seven days, fourteen days, twenty one days, that part's the same as any traditional cement out there. So it'll continually get harder over the next.
And with Herc Base too, have the traffic on a straight line, um, that doesn't affect it at all. It only helps it. Um, same with bathroom, yeah. If you have an asphalt highway, once the compaction's finished, cars going down on a straight line is no problem. It's just when they're turning it is a problem, especially in the heat or anything. You'll get that tearing or whatever, a little bit of running, but, but, uh, going in a straight line, it's no problem.
Well, going back to when I said that we did work for Stanley, um, when Herc Base did John Stanley or even just the same one I'll keep referring to Oakbank, that was just so current. But, uh, the day we finished, the very next day asphalt was applied. So then that maybe just speaks to the timeframe or whatever, how long you gotta wait. And it's, it's really, you don't have to wait. It's gonna be, it's gonna be very, very, very quick. So as an overall use cases, new construction, that's certainly a part where we can play a role. Uh, the main part of our business is, is remediation and helping with, uh, helping with failing roads and, and bringing them back up to up to, uh, up to par. So full depth reclamation is just a fancy term or a fancy word for, um, not hauling anything away. More so just pulverizing your existing asphalt or chip seal or whatever you're wearing surfaces in with a portion of the base adding cement to it. Um, and so by that, we're recycling everything there is there. There is, there's literally no hallway. Um, which is where you're again saving time on labor and materials and all that kind of a thing. So these products that we're talking about here, these would all be considered FDR or FDR plus. Uh, so that part's there. So that's the, that's the quick and easy summary, um, of who we are and what we do. And if there are questions, Steve and I are happy to field them.
Yes, go ahead, council.
So thank you for your presentation.
Sure.
So first of all, council has to understand that this, the presentation is not to compete with the hauling away. Like that's what I like about this process. So Deputy Mayor Mercky and I went to Borger last year to see the process being done.
Sure.
And, and.
By another company, Magnum.
Right. And I've been harping for years. We haul product out over a good road and haul it back in over a good road, ruining that road or testing the length of it. Right. Fix this road, you know? And, um, there's no reason why you can't. And the process works, has worked fifty years in Germany where the original equipment come from.
Sure.
Which leads to a question. So you've run a lot smaller piece of equipment for the stabilization and the mixing as compared to the competitor, which also has, um, they, when they inject this man, it actually is dustless, actually. So, but how does that change compare?
Do they not do dry powder?
They use dry powder, but it's, but it, it, it is, but it isn't, but it is metered into the machine. So anyway.
So that's, that's fine. Um, to ask your question, we weren't sure. So this, this unit we've had for a number of years and it is plenty capable. We weren't sure until this, until this, uh, Oakbank project, we haven't had to do four inch asphalt. Or that's about as thick as we've ever seen. Um,
And how deep you go?
Depending on the job, but anywhere between eight to twelve inches would be standard. Um, it's got an adjustable drum, so it's just the button, the guy's pressing the cap to choose that depth. But, uh, so that's, that's adjustable, but, um, we went through that whole project. It was over a kilometer in length and it was, it was no problem. So the size of the machine or whatever is of no, no concern. Yes, they have a bigger one. There is no hurdle in, uh, in what we're capable of doing with, with our machine.
Yeah. Um, so it's like, oh, sorry, you're not. Duraflex.
Yes.
That was asked for in the tender.
Correct.
What is it? And was it included in this price?
Uh, so Duraflex and Herc Base would be
Similar.
opposing each other. I suppose, yeah, they're like, they're, they're similar, different brand names for, for similar, uh, chemical reaction as to how it reacts with, uh, with the cement.
What was asked for in the tender was it, um, a finished product with a two MPA strength? And both products can do that.
Yeah.
And Duraflex is what Magnum uses, Herc Base is what?
I, I could, I could bring it down to a level of saying it's, uh, you ask for bounty and someone's giving you brawn.
Do I understand that?
Yeah, so.
But what I like, so I. But what I like, so I sent some emails out comparing apples to apples and making sure the process is the same.
Yeah.
Which leads to my next question. So what percentage of cement are you using with that tender price?
That was at six.
Six percent.
Six percent, okay. Um we, again, so it was it was quoted at six percent. The way the the way the RFP was presented was, I mean, Steve, it sounded like you wanted to say something there, but the way it was written was. We need to do the lab test and get all these cylinders cast and determine if we can reach uh two MPA. With four, with six, or with eight. So there's, I think it's nine different roads. And we'd have to cast cylinders on them all to determine, are we doing it at four, six, or eight, or wherever it may be. But whatever it takes to get to uh get to that two MPA number, that is the the base.
The lab will determine what percentage of cement is needed. If eight percent is needed to get to MPA, that's what we'll use.
So then there's an increase in price then?
No.
No, we're, we did it as a quote, as a as a solid number, yeah.
So we only need two percent, you're not gonna give us anybody back?
No, but we're all.
You you won't get it.
We're all not gonna encourage you anymore if we need to.
Just asking, which in a lot of cases, you think the lab work would have been done first, though.
Exactly. That that's that's what should have been done. Exactly.
To be able to judge, so it's a.
So everybody's playing with the same. Yeah.
Yeah, that's uh what I wanna call that. Lots of kind of worms. Um cylinders cast and that test performed is, there's there's costs affiliated with it. And I don't think you're gonna get too many people bidding on it if they have to, if they're all gonna spend twenty thousand dollars, well, fifty thousand dollars to do all nine roads. And then not be awarded the work. So then it could be something that you guys take on. And say, okay, we're gonna do these tests. Now this is exactly what we need, please bid. And then you have even bids coming in across the board.
And and actually, it's probably better for the owner, the RM, to do the pre-bid testing. Of their soil conditions and give that to the contractors in your bid. So that maybe they could do a design build.
But some of our roads like this, the one over, the one next one over, for instance, uh has been seal coated. You talked about um. Abandoned, you know, but but we seal coated these roads. That road over there probably twenty, twenty-five years ago.
Sure.
Only had one layer on it. Also, it should have two, right?
And and then. Ends on what's underneath?
I know. So what's wearing on that road is the is the driving surface, not necessarily the base. So there was a patch done, not patch, but an overlay done from the store to the hall. And that last, that's been there for fifteen years now, that overlay. You know, so my question is with some of the which talk about pricing and that is, is some roads with the traffic, amount of traffic on them, the weight on them. Don't need an FDR, you know, just need an overlay. So that's what I was hoping we can talk about in that and that. So to make our money go, to make our money go further.
Exactly. Best thing for the taxpayer.
You know, right. And then do a do a overlay on a road that still has a good base. There's no, there's no um potholes and the sides aren't pushing up. Um you know, you can see the driving surface is wearing off. And you talk about moisture. That's a problem when moisture gets into that driving surface. That kills that road and weakens it.
Exactly.
You know, we put a surface on it for two things, to keep the dust down and to keep the speed up. And also to um keep the base from.
Yeah, distracting all that moisture, yeah, for sure.
But we can do an evaluation of your roads and if your roads, um if they don't need the cement stabilization. I'll be fine with recommending just do an overlay. And and possibly an overlay where you do a scratch coat to fill any depressions or anything and then do a two inch overlay afterwards.
So when you say that, we've had rain, obviously, the last couple, couple. And you drive some of those roads and there's no rain on the road.
Oh, that's good.
You know.
And no cracks?
Well.
You've got a few.
In 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 Manitoba, you know?
Well, you got minus forty and plus forty. So the asphalt expands and it shrinks.
Thank you, uh Counselor. Counselor Slicker, do you have any questions?
Okay, so I'm kind of new to the road world. This is my third year. And I've been to a few, I went to one conference about how to build a road that went through Ford Industries.
Oh, Ford, okay, yes, sure.
And I also have been to a couple of um companies that are at the AMM Conference.
Yes.
Where they have their little pieces and.
Yeah.
It was my understanding up until just now, that the ideal way to do this was peel that, like you said. Take all that stuff off, go buy from someone else, their old road, crush it up and put it all back.
The actual plane needs?
Yeah.
Okay.
To me, this is like rocket science, sorry. Cause why do I want to have to scrounge around to do other RMs or the city of Winnipeg or whatever? To get the stuff to put back on it when your machine can just use what's there and make it go.
What Hurt Base will do is reuse your existing materials, so you're not depleting Mother Earth's resources.
And running around trying to find stuff to put on there.
Exactly. And and lots of times too, you can't build up on an existing road. If you have ditches or something, if you build up a foot on a road, all of a sudden your ditches are, you know, dangerous. Too steep.
Especially if you fall off.
Yeah, but this would be considered cold in place recycling. Um so you're doing exactly that, you're saving the environment, you're reusing this existing roadway, you're you're deleting the hauling portion of it, right?
And the cost.
And the cost of the whole.
Exactly.
And which in turn, as you said, moves the time along.
Exactly, right.
Right?
Yeah.
So like I said in the beginning, we're not, we're not comparing to the original process of a full depth repair of digging out two or two or three feet. And that's what I'm saying, you you know, so you're talking about, we used to dig, dig, dig them out, but inconvenience people for a month.
Oh, exactly.
Now they do, now they do half of the road and then you gotta get the driveways back and then in there. But like I say, my biggest. Hurdle was driving over, taking that stuff always, stuff we have paid for, you know?
Yeah.
And hauling back in. So the process, I have no problem with it. I just wanna make sure that the process that you're gonna do is. As good or better.
Oh, exactly.
Than maybe the competition or.
Absolutely.
Again, going back to the Hurt Base, I can't find nothing on the, on the internet, nothing about it or. Is it a relative new product? It's that's been around since two thousand and two?
Yeah, so this is, this is, this is where it gets, it's a unique story. So pardon me if I go into like a storytelling mode. I I have kids and I have storytelling mode. Um Hurt Base was invented in two thousand and one, not under the name Hurt Base. So Hurt Base was invented by a man named Fred in Kansas. Um he calls it Andale Slurry. You won't find much on that either. Now, Andale Construction is the company that's been doing this across the continental US, like we're talking, most every state there. His his business is huge. I've personally been there. And it is uh it is, he is doing incredible work. Now, I guess what I'm trying to do is essentially do what they did and sell myself right out of a job. Cause he no longer has a salesman working for him. He's just written into so many tenders, it's more than he can handle. Now, he met, this is a unique happenstance, uh he met my best friend's dad. His name is Henry. So I'm just gonna be putting names on this so you can follow the story a lot. Um Fred met Henry at a trade show. They have business reasons why they would wanna connect or whatever. And what ended up happening was Fred says to Henry, Henry, you should do this, what I'm doing, this cement stabilization in in Canada. I'll sell you the rights and you can go out, go at it. And Henry kind of drank the Kool-Aid and figured that's a great idea. Let's let's do that. So he purchases these rights for the, for Hurt Base, well. Hen- Henry named it Hurt Base. But he purchases the rights for uh for super slurry is what it was called at the time. Uh and brings it to Canada. And they do, they get, they get work and they start going on. But Henry's primary focus was his his full-time business. Uh maybe keep business names out of it, but it was a, it was a, an oil fracking manufacturing company. Very confusing to me, but anyway, he was making good money, enough money to say, yeah, I'll buy this Hurt Base thing and make a go of that. What unbeknownst to him, or he didn't have this in the plan, he ended up selling that uh oil fracking company for a lot of money. Not gonna say the number, but for enough to not need to work anymore. So he doesn't go to work anymore. He, Hurt Base kind of falls to sleep as a result after doing some jobs, like I said, in twenty fourteen, fifteen. There's projects in this, in this province that are over ten years old now. Uh but so Hurt Base goes to sleep. He wakes up about two years ago. And he says, oh, shoot, like I own Hurt Base, someone should be doing something with that. Um so he connected with with the owner of Precision Land Solutions, who I said is my parent company. And told him about this opportunity and he's, we we ate it up. We're like, yep, that makes good sense to us. Now we're drinking the Kool-Aid. Um let's go at it. So we've been in ownership of it for about two years now. And um yeah, so that would maybe explain why, or hopefully that explains why I can say we have projects that are ten years old and older. And yet we're new at the same time. It's because we're kind of breathing second life into this thing now. Yeah.
So I apologize for the questions, the councilman, just trying to. Trying to educate council as well, though, because been around many years. So. Four distributors was mentioned, E and one was a product they used to use.
Yeah, I've used it.
And and I think it was a great product because when we first started still coating roads around the RM thirty, like thirty years ago. Poor man's asphalt, trying to get the roads done. We used E and one on NA base, which is a higher content of clay. Laying it out, injecting water at a certain percentage.
And Ian one, you didn't want too much clay in it.
Right. But a C base sometimes or a.
Yeah, okay.
Whatever, you know, in a way, and then laying it out, letting it dry, similar to what you do, and then putting the seal, the seal coat on it.
Yeah.
And it worked well.
Seal code or asphalt or whatever.
We've never done asphalt on them because we've never had the money. We wanna do more roads with.
Dust proofing.
Go further. So we've used E and one for years. And the same thing, you put a five gallon pail into a.
That water truck.
Tanker, you know, and lay it out and grade it back and forth.
Exactly.
We had a probably mixture of years ago, but upon just using a grader back and forth was just as easy.
Yeah. Don't you get it mixed?
So that's why some of these seal coat roads have E and one under them.
Okay.
You know, which again is where the base is good.
I I think we get the message to Counselor.
Anyway, let's be, let's do our due diligence on it. One more question, though. The roads that you listed, there are breakdowns for each cost on the road.
In the, in the document we would have sent back as a response to the tender, they were broken down by road.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone have any other questions or comments for these gentlemen?
Your Manitoba Good Roads Association, um Tara Liski, you know her? Okay, um she was involved in a um Hurt Base project that we did down in Chausfeld, just south of Winkler. And Andre Dupree, do you know that name?
No.
Okay, he worked for her in the lab before she got to the head of engineers in Manitoba. And uh they both said Hurt Base was the best cement. For me.
But I always hasn't used it yet, though.
Yes, they have.
Oh, have they?
Yes.
So you said you were waiting for them to try it?
Well, they're gonna try it, but they've used it on smaller projects.
Yeah, so I'm, like, I I speak from the refresh, cause I wasn't there ten years ago when they, when they were initially introduced and all that stuff, right? So yeah, when I, when I speak, it starts from the refresh, about two years ago.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation, folks. Uh it's very informative. Uh we certainly will. Uh Council certainly will take this under advisement. Uh again, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thanks for having me.
You betcha. I'm sure you got matters to chat about without us here, so we'll.
They can stay if you want.
Got more cokes?
If I could have everyone's attention, we'll continue now. Uh we will continue with the uh. The appointment of the tax sale manager. Uh be resolved or address some other. Four two one of the rural municipality of Saint Andrews Tax Service Incorporated. Be appointed to manage tax, property tax, rear recovery for the RM. For the RM of Saint Andrews and. Be it further resolved that pursuant to bylaw number four four two one. Of the rural municipality of Saint Andrews, the following individual be appointed tax service managers. For the rural municipality of Saint Andrews. Donna Zinnick, Vice President of Tax Service Incorporated. And an alternate, I guess, uh Tyler Burnside, Associate of Tax Service Incorporated. Um can I have a mover, please? Counselor Slicker, a second. Counselor Dornboss, uh can I open that to the floor? Comments concerned? Yes.
Just a question for the DCA. We've used you all the way through, have we not? At the same company?
It's the same company.
Yes, it is.
Right? So why are we specifically looking for names?
We've had gone and doing it for many years, but we don't have authorization to have an alternate. So let's mind your step. We, they need a second person.
Or just clean up?
If somebody, if you know, somebody falls sick or something like that, they, we just, they need.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. Uh all in favor? Posed. Okay, that's carried. Okay, next thing on the agenda is firefighters. Okay, what would be? A firefighter reimbursement for provincial wild fires. Um.
Okay.
Yep, he uh uh our, our manager for safety was going to talk on that. At the last meeting, he had holidays.
Okay.
So we'll move it to the next meeting, but the reimbursement is moving forward.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we'll uh save that for the next meeting then, when we get them. And then, next on the agenda, uh item number three one three, public reserve closure. Role number seven nine eight four decimal zero zero zero. Where is the land described as role number seven nine eight four decimal zero 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 is currently designated as public reserve? And whereas the subject land is not currently being utilized for public or municipal purchases. And may have potential for future residential development. Now there be it resolved that council of the rural municipality of Saint Andrews authorize administration to. Prepare a bylaw for the closure of the public reserve designation for role number seven nine eight four. Decimal zero zero zero. Initiate the necessary application and consultation with the Manitoba. Community Planning Branch for consideration and approval as required under the Planning Act. Following first reading, uh Steve, Braden, will you be speaking to this or?
Yeah, I think the resolution kind of outlines it, but very briefly, uh if council recalls, this is one of the properties. Uh listed in the municipal land inventory report I had prepared earlier. Uh we have received, uh you know, an inquiry on this property, but before we can even consider any of that, doing due diligence with realtors, things like that. We must first close it as a public reserve. And so this will just first authorize. Administration to prepare the bylaw for the first reading, where more details will come. And then I would circulate it to community planning. Ahead of the public hearing that's required. So this is just for your authorization to proceed.
Okay, what we do date is we need a mover on this to have a mover place. Counselor Slicker and Seconder. Counselor Feeblecorn. Uh does Counsel have any questions? Comments? No? Okay, I'll call.
I just have a.
Okay, sir. Go ahead, Counselor Wonder.
So uh this, this piece of property is in my award. And I've walked by it and driven by it and rode my bike by it countless times and I'm, I'm somewhat concerned because. The majority of the lot is on a slope. That goes into somewhat of a uh creek that's used for um spring runoff. And I don't know how uh it may be utilized for um. Residential purposes. I know there's an inquiry on it, uh but I have some real concerns as to, you know, what it may look like and uh. If we were to impact uh drainage in any way or uh that kind of thing, so. That's just kind of my comment. I'm just a little concerned about that.
And and noted, and it would entirely depend if, you know, down the line, if it was approved for residential development on the layout of the house. Uh you know, uh for site variations, that's where conditional uses can apply for different setbacks, if it needs to be closer to the road, things like that. However, it is purely dependent on what would be proposed for the property. Would it be subdivided into two lots? Would it be one lot? There's a few unknowns and we'd have to look at market assessment and values for that to make a determination. But noted your stance there as well. Yes, it does drain into a drainage area, so.
Even looking at the the lot, it goes all the way back, it goes across that, that creek by the looks of the uh.
Aerial imagery.
Yeah.
Yeah, right at the eastern limit of it, that's where the water flows. Yeah. And so only about, we'll say. Just under one half of the property, maybe even closer to one third is at grade and then it slopes down pretty significantly. Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Well, that's just my.
Lots of time you'll see property lines go right into the river or creek.
Yeah, I just, yeah, that's just my comment.
Also something to note, uh you'll see in the aerial imagery, there's a small triangular lot further west, that's all under one title. Uh I can bring more information on that, potentially at the first reading, just to kind of summarize that, but we would look to ideally separate them. If we were to move forward with. We would look to ideally separate them if we were to move forward with something like this. Yeah.
Okay, uh, I'll call for a vote then. All in favor? Carried. Okay, the next item. Would be local medical uh fire skin donation. Uh, do we have anyone who can speak on this or?
Yeah, I could I could speak on it. We we uh we received a donation of these fire skins, so we just want to make the public aware of it. And, uh, you know, we're quite happy to uh to connect and have this done.
Very nice of them to do.
Was we receiving one of them or? One then, right? Okay, if we don't have any questions about that, we'll move on to the next item. Uh, the next item on the agenda. Would be. Item three one five, it's uh. The twenty twenty five road renewal contract award.
Can we move this into camera then? Because I have some questions of administration on. You heard him changing the numbers on the contract and 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 what ramifications that has. You know, I've got no problem with the process and the thing, it just um. We talked about some of the difference in roads and that, and how do we change that? Or can we or can we change it?
No, I I would prefer not, and the reason I prefer not is I would like to uh keep it uh. In the uh in a public forum for this uh wording of this contract. Uh, so what we can do is uh move on then. Uh, whereas requests for RFP twenty twenty five. Two zero Public Works for the twenty twenty five road renewal contract. Was advertised on MERS and whereas four bids were received and evaluated in the tender process. And whereas Herb Base was the lowest bidder meeting specifications at a cost of. One million. Three hundred and twenty four thousand nine hundred and ninety two dollars and eighty two cents. Therefore, be it resolved that council accept the bid submission. For the RFP twenty twenty five zero two Public Works Rover new for. Herb Base plus ten percent contingency and approval of the total renewal budget. Cost of one million. Four hundred and fifty seven uh thousand four hundred and ninety two dollars. Can I have a mover please? And second please. Okay, second or wonder. Okay, I'll open this up to the floor. Uh, sorry.
And and we collect Trevor's on.
Yeah, Trevor's available.
So my concern is. I'll say it, we're gonna be wasting money on doing base work that doesn't need 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 be done. We can be spending that money fixing other roads that need to be done. You heard him say that he will. Do whatever roads we need to be done. I showed the counselor of the area and I showed the CEO some of these roads. And I drove the rest of the roads and good 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 choice on the roads and good choice where you where you were doing them. Um, you know, from Scott to number nine highway that the from uh on on uh Oakfield. It was done a couple of years ago. Good choice to do the full depth repair on that road. Donald Road, the same thing. It was done last year halfway down to the west from the fire hall. Now we're gonna do from there to number nine. Come to two to two thirty Settlers Trail um from what twenty eight to number nine highway. Again, good job. Uh, might as well keep them consistent with the the base that was done and pavement. So they're both gonna wear out in. Twenty five thirty 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 years. Some of the streets around here. Um, you know, there's one street we're gonna do. It's got three homes on it. It might get five cars a day. We're gonna spend a hundred grand or a hundred and fifty grand to do a full depth repair when that whole subdivision. Has had overlays all over it and the overlays are ten, twelve years old. Um, so I'd like to see us be more diligent in 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 more flexible in. Just doing an overlay on those roads, which half that subdivision over there has had an overlay on it. Half the road they want to do here has had an overlay on it. Main Street from the store to the hall has had overlay on it. It lasted years and years and years. So. I understand people want to. CYA so that the road doesn't fail in fifteen, twenty years and say, we did this, we did that. But you got a long road or a road that half is done one process and overlay, and now you want to do it to an R-Tech road that will hold a hundred and sixty thousand pounds. You know?
I I guess uh what I'd like here is uh, let's not forget what's in front of us. It's a request for a decision. Uh, we all want to do what's best for the RM and for the rest.
Or not, or for spending that kind of money just on that kind of on on a product?
Just uh here we are.
Okay.
Um, okay, then, this is important, uh. Uh, the resolution for decision or the request for decision in front of us. I. Has a number of uh uh streets on it that are or were identified. To be uh. We did, okay. So what we're looking at here is we're looking at, I don't think we should be debating. Whether a street needs to be repaired or.
So there's wasting money or not, but.
Just just hang on, okay. I I don't think we need to uh go there because we've uh, uh, that train has already left the station. We've already. For this information, we looked at those and determined what roads we were gonna work on. Uh, subsequently, a bid was placed out uh through the tendering process. And we ended up getting back a uh a quote from the company that we've. Just uh heard from. Uh, so that's the question, in my opinion. Uh, do we uh go forward on this? Or do we not go forward on it? I think there's two options that are given to council. Just uh. Yeah, read these options, um. Okay, one option is to award the contract and the other option is uh do not hire the contractor.
That's not, there's there's more options.
No, 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 but this is just what's on this this table right here.
Uh, Deputy Mayor, can I add something?
Sure.
We we heard the fellow today say that. He's willing to go and evaluate the roads with us. And and if we agree that a road over only needs an overlay, they are happy enough to uh. Recommend that and not do the process. So that's what I heard. I don't know.
That's why I asked him if the roads are separated. Cost of each road. So we're not gonna do this road, so it's gonna be less money.
We wouldn't waste money if we find a a road that we feel can just do an overlay. Uh, you know, I may even do an independent uh a process with someone else at the same time. And we can go with them and and uh, you know, if we take a few roads off. And we save some money, then maybe we could pick uh, we all have additional roads, right? Uh, we gave council a lot of input and we all had additional roads. Even have additional roads in town here that we can maybe do overlay. So that could solve that problem. And I want to acknowledge that that uh you pointed out that doing overlays is is uh maybe a solution for some roads. Versus uh this process.
Okay, uh, Counselor Schlecker.
I think it comes down to. All of this was discussed during budget. It was.
No.
It was. The counter hunt, I was there. You missed.
The money was, but not the process.
Yeah. Believe me, it was, but even I comprehended some of it. So these roads were discussed. Everybody sitting at this table got a say in where their roads are. If this company is going to be polite enough, and I'm assuming because they're maybe newer to the game. I was very impressed when the Maple Leaf gentleman said, we'll work with you. And even I can tell from all the road stuff that you've been teaching me for three years, which I'm not, I've been sort of sucking up. That is an awesome process because we're not taking stuff out and we're not bringing stuff in. So why I I'm not understanding why you're you're trying to rehash something that's already been set in place. During our budget times and we met a lot of time during budget to do all this stuff. We need to get these roads done this year. I don't know about all you, but I'm getting lots of questions of where the roads work. Um, so this has been said, some of the stuff you're looking at, I'll gladly sit down and I would suggest that come. October, November, we have a meeting about nothing but the road budget, all that kind of stuff. Some RM uh do do that, I've learned. And that is where we set out all the parameters.
I've been saying that for years.
Well, okay, good. I've only been here three years, Counselor Hunt, and I'm a bit slow sometimes. So next year we do, this year we do that in the fall.
Okay, counselor. Mr. Uh, I just want to make sure that, uh, you know, sometimes when these tenders go out and there's no backup on them, but if they're willing to save. If a road needs an overlay and it's all already itemized and they need to use the roads, that they won't say, you know, sorry, there's gonna be an extra twenty percent because you're not fulfilling the. The one point for million dollar contract every time, so. And that's what I wanted to ask in camera, because we've been told before by other administration. Once we put a tender out, we can't change it. We can't even take away from it because that's an extent e- 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 expected. And how can that even be? And I question that all the time because if that come in twice over budget, we can't, we don't have the money to do it, so. So as far as budget goes, we would agree to do these roads, but the sto- soil stabilization project. Process wasn't even talked about then. So that's why we're adding this too.
That for three years.
No, anyway, but but the thing is though, um. So I talked about good choices on 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 the roads like uh Oakfield settler uh settlers. Donald Road, because you've gone from a full depth repair, you're doing a full depth repair and you're making the road good a hundred, a hundred, a hundred percent. But to do half the road, which has had an overlay, lasted ten years and previous twenty five years, to do. This process on it is wasting money, and I'd rather spend that money on some other roads that you people need done.
And and they said that they would.
Okay.
Work with us and do an overlay.
In this present form, I'll ask for a recorded vote. I'll vote against it, but if we're willing to to be flexible with the contractor. As well as the paving contractor too, because I'm assuming those roads, they're gonna ask the the uh Public Works Manager if those roads were put in submitted. Per road, you know, so. We, you know what the prices are, like obviously they won the contract because they're lowest. You know, product per square meter per distance, whatever, you know. So we're still gonna go with that rate of of quote. Moving forward, same as the paving, same as this, so I trust they will work with us, both contractors. So.
I only have one more.
Yeah, go ahead.
I thought during budget, it was agreed that River Road from Pruden to uh. Half my road was gonna have this done and I don't see it on the on the list.
I thought we were gonna do millions there.
Okay. Yeah, all right, thank you.
Okay, uh, so just one more comment. So, uh, Mr. Public Works Manager, is that acceptable to you? Will you work with us on on? Looking at dealing with the contract and some of these roads and and just doing an overlay on some of them? On here?
It's just unmuted, yeah.
Yeah, hello. Yes, we can change anything through a change order with the contractor.
If you have the prices.
As long as we're within budget, we can do that.
Right, so I'm looking to save us money on on what process has been done on roads all already. To still spend the amount of budget, but to make our money go further, correct?
For sure.
Okay. Okay, let's move forward and I thank you for. We're gonna be proactive with this and do roads that that need to be done on 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 an overlay and a and a and a full depth repair, so. I feel confident in any of them.
Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Fee.
I was gonna say it was great comments, great presentation. I'm I'm very comfortable with the process going forward.
Well, there are no more or if anyone doesn't have any additional comments.
My my only comment was that, uh, you know, I was hearing some chatter from council about. You know, going online and not knowing anything about the company. So Trevor and I talked and we said we're gonna have to bring them in today so council can have some confidence.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And after listening to them, uh, you know, some of the background and that, I was confident to begin with. Trevor's, I met with him a number of times. He's quite confident in them and I feel even uh better about today after listening to that.
Totally, thank you.
Well, if we don't have, uh, if if we don't have any more input into it, uh, I'd like to call a vote on the matter. Sorry? That would be good. Can I have a mover please?
I thought it was Chris.
I think you had it already.
I think I thought we did it already.
I thought it was Counselor Bond or Counselor Schlecker.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, uh, that's good enough for me. Uh, nevertheless, uh, yeah, I know it's a lot of money. Nevertheless, uh, all all in favor? Uh, that would be carried.
Can I ask one question? Is Public Works Manager staying on for the greater tender as well? Okay, because I got a question from that. Thank you.
That's carried. Well, it's like we're gonna be moving camera right now. Okay, be it resolved that council move into camera at uh five thirty six. Discuss matters that are in preliminary stages and respecting what decisions in public. Prejudice the municipality's ability to carry out activities or negotiations as well as legal and personal items and. Be it further result that members of council agree to keeping confidence matters. Discussed at the meeting that is close to the public under section one five two bracket three. And that the committee. Decides to keep confident until matters is discussed at the meeting of council or at. Committee conducting public. Okay, can I have a mover please? Counselor Schlecker and secondary Counselor Dornboss and we will move. All in favor? Oh, both please. Carried.
Okay.
Moving out of council, uh, be it resolved that council. Move out of in camera at six oh four. Can I have a mover please? Counselor Schlecker and secondary by Counselor Dornboss. All in favor? Carried. Okay, the next item, uh, this would be under new business. It is the uh. August twenty second, two thousand and twenty five check detail report. Be it resolved that council approved the August twenty two twenty twenty five check detail report as presented. Can I have a mover please? Counselor Schlecker and the secondary by Counselor Dornboss. Uh, any questions, concerns, comments on this?
An email was sent with five questions and all were answered with great detail. Thank you.
Okay, nothing else, so I'll vote on it. Uh, all in favor? That's carried. And the next item is item number five two four Petersfield Curling Club Capital Grant Request. Uh, be it result that Petersfield Community Club listed under the. Capital Grant Section Policy Number uh GN eighteen. Whose application for funding has uh inadvertently been uh admitted in the screen budget. Deliberation be approved. And further that the council grant the amount of up to twenty two hundred dollars to Petersfield Community Club. For the capital grant expenditure with funds coming from the recreational. Operation budget or as determined by the Director of Finance. Uh, can I have a mover please? Counselor Dornboss. And seconded by Counselor Feeblecorn. Uh, any comments and concerns here?
Hang on.
Nope, no. Okay, I'll call for a vote. Uh, all in favor? That's carried.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes.
There was a three point two two and three point two three, some management reports of by actual statements.
Oh, my goodness, yes, you're right. Uh. Yes, does anybody have any uh concerns? Uh, we have, uh, as you mentioned, uh, missed, uh. I find it. Three point two two, three point two two. Okay, the management uh report for July twenty twenty five, uh. Any concerns there? Nothing, okay, uh what I would like to do, okay, sorry.
Um the delivery for the um fire trucks, is that still on schedule or the update on? Potentially, would it be this year or is it still, is it next year?
We could get an update, but it's on schedule.
I would, I would like uh to add that uh. The self-fire hall again, uh last month did a fantastic job, they did it all of the. Some uh thirty-one times, they seem to be very, very busy uh in the summer months. Yeah, it is. Okay, uh next on the list is um. Is financial statements, uh that's for information, does anyone have any uh? Comments and concerns regarding this document? Yes.
Uh it's been a long time since we seen one, and I wanna thank uh. Accountant, for putting that together, it's well done, very well done.
It's uh as Terry's been doing a a great job, uh. Uh putting the pieces together here and and getting us on track, I'm really, really confident in her accounting skills, very confident.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. And the next item that we will uh move on to is the uh Greater Tender Award. Uh that would be uh. Okay, yeah. Oops, did I miss one? Greater, okay, Greater Tender Award. Uh Greater Tender Award, uh whereas a new grader has been identified in the twenty twenty-five. Inventory Replacement Plan, and whereas council passed the twenty twenty-five Financial Plan. That included seven hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of a grader in the capital budget. Therefore, be a result that council authorized purchase of a twenty twenty-five John Deere. Model eight seven zero GP from. Brand tractor at a cost of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and further. That the cost be funded through borrowing or existing municipal funds as determined by the. Uh Director of Finance, have a mover please? Uh councillor Slaker and second councillor Mondo. Uh does Trevor wanna speak to this?
I don't know, Trevor, did you? We we have questions, I just wanna say that uh uh we use the canoe process here, so we didn't. Uh we didn't tender the. The, let's say, call it the old-fashioned way, uh we used canoe. Uh other RMs are using canoe, the tenders have been done, so uh the process moves faster. And it's straightforward, uh Trevor can answer questions if those are.
Councillor Hunt, you have a question?
Just a question, Public Works Manager, are they both the same weight and horsepower, like the difference in price is phenomenal, hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars? What's the reason for that?
They're not, they were not tendered, or sorry, they were not um. Priced the same, um that was due to Tormont. Um they were given the same spec of what we had to trade in, and that's what they were trying to replace. Again, I wanna make council very aware of. There was no tender here, because we are part of AMM canoe procurement. The RM does not have to tender this. We can just go to whoever we want, the tender process is already done.
Yeah. But is, are they two, are they four, are they four-wheel drive or six-wheel drive?
They're just tandem graders.
Okay, and was, is the Tormont price a tandem grader or an all-wheel-drive grader?
Again. There was no tender process. I don't, sorry, not me, the RM does not have to tender it. I sent out proposal for pricing, the tender process is already done through the canoe procurement. Program.
No, I'm just, from my own knowledge of like, I'm just trying to figure out why the difference in price so much, which is good for us, to be able to. Um get that good of of a price, I'm just wondering.
Because at this point, Tormont, so, sorry, Tormont. Sent a number in for a grader that was way beyond that we need. That was on their end, not our end. They knew exactly what we had to trade in, they knew exactly what we wanted to replace, they chose to. Send a price in for what they wanted.
So it was an all-wheel drive that they sent a price to them?
They did send a price for all-wheel drive, we did not ask for an all-wheel drive, there is not an all-wheel drive grader that we're replacing.
Okay. Okay, maybe in the future, we will go back to them and say, hey, what's your price? Again, what we're doing with the uh stabilization guys, comparing apples to apples, apples to apples, apples to apples, so.
Again, Tormont knew exactly what they were pricing out, because they came to the shop and seen the exact grader that they were. Tendering for, or pricing out, sorry, not tendering.
Asking for a quote. Okay, thank you, I just got one comment, in the future when we do budgeting, and I think I had said this when we did budgeting, we budgeted seven hundred thousand dollars for a grader, which is. The outright purchase price, um in the in in the past, we've asked. For preliminary budget price on a machine on a trade-in, so we kinda know what what we're paying. Cause I don't know if this skewed the budget or not, but we budgeted seven hundred thousand dollars for it, and we're only paying, you know, three seventy-five and with taxes, maybe four hundred and that, so. You know, the price in the budget could have been five hundred, whatever, cuz we didn't include the the trade-in price in the budget, so. In the future, as long as we have that knowledge of. Get a preliminary budget price, so we're a little bit more in tune with what the prices will be on the budget. Thank you.
Can I comment on that, please?
Sure.
Because uh council did not approve seven hundred thousand dollars in capital, they approved. To borrow money to purchase a grader, so seven hundred thousand dollars was not in the capital.
Right, you're right.
I know, it was, we're gonna lease this one to own, but still is.
No, no, not lease to own, council approved to borrow the money to purchase the grader.
Okay, yeah, okay, borrow to own, the same same, the same principle, okay, thank you.
Any other questions regarding this? Okay, I'll call for a vote, uh all in favor? Opposed, carried.
Don't we have to pick which one we want?
No, no, you read it on the resolution, didn't you?
Yes, it's on the resolution, uh you can read the resolution over again if you'd like.
Then we got this, we got to decide upon if it's gonna be from the machinery reserve or from borrowing.
Okay, next on the agenda is item three two six, it's a uh request for decision, road renewal. Contract award uh for maybe tendering. Whereas request. Uh RFP twenty twenty-five dash zero three PW. Paving of various roads for the twenty twenty-five season was advertised on works, and whereas. Seven bids were received and evaluated in the process, and whereas Maple Leaf Construction was the lowest. Bitter, meeting the specifications at a cost of nine hundred and six thousand. Seven hundred and ninety dollars and fifty cents. Therefore, be a result that council accept the bid submission from RFP. Twenty twenty-five dash three PW paving from. Maple Leaf Construction plus a ten percent contingency and approval. The paving road uh renewal cost of uh ninety-nine thousand. Ninety-nine thousand seven, uh correction, it's a little blurry here. Ninety, nine hundred and ninety-seven. Thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. Uh can I have a mover please? Councillor Feeblecorn, a secondary. Councillor Mondo. Any discussion on this matter?
No discussion, we picked the lowest bid.
So, just a comment in in same comment as the previous one for the base work, as long as. Um thinking uh Public Works and administration to work with this contractor as well. Um their price is obviously the lowest priced, that they put in per square meter. Uh thickness of uh asphalt, whatever, so their work, which includes mobilization, mobilization and demobilization. So if there's less compacting work, like we have this money to spend in the budget, and I agree, spend it, and we have to do some more paving on a road, some overlay, let's do it and work with Public Works and yourself. To to uh get the most of our out of our, out of our money and start getting our roads. A little bit fixed up, the 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 infrastructure, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh councillor, councillor Dornboss.
Uh are we a little bit over budget on this? Cause I think we allowed for two point two five.
Uh Trevor, you wanna comment on that, or Terry?
For, we're talking total.
Okay, I'll call the question then, uh all in favor? Okay, then, opposed, that's carried. Okay, and the next item is um. Item number three two seven, it's an RFD zoning bylaw. Uh RFP award. Whereas funds have been approved in the twenty twenty-five Financial. Plan for presentation of the new Saint Andrews zoning bylaw. And whereas the municipality is requested to propose RFP. Twenty twenty-five dash zero four meeting for comprehensive zoning bylaw. Update, and whereas three submissions were received and evaluated. And whereas WSP Canada Incorporated provided the best technical service and clear project understanding for the lowest costs. Now, therefore be a result that council of the RM of Saint Andrews award RFP. Twenty twenty-five dash zero four ED to WSP. Canada Incorporated in the amount of forty-six thousand. Four hundred and ninety-five dollars plus tax and authorize the uh RF administration to. Uh execute the contract. Uh any comments for management, Gil?
I'll comment briefly, I'd just like to thank the three uh consultants that submitted their proposals, we reviewed them, uh myself and the valuation team of. Our deputy CEO and Director of Infrastructure, so we went through each of them. Um and very confident that all three would be able to provide the service, and of course, looking at cost, WSP is the lowest bidder. Uh we've worked with them before, we're familiar with their capacity, they worked previously uh directly with me with the development and construction standards for the RM. And also the water feasibility study with the land use memo, so confident that they can definitely deliver on this.
Thank you. And if there are uh in no more uh comments, I'll call for a vote, oh sorry.
Very timeframe.
Deliver, the final deliverable by June first, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, can I get a mover in the secondary? Move, okay, uh councillor uh Thornboss and secondary please. Councillor Slaker, um. Uh what I will do now is uh call for a vote, all in favor? That is carried. Okay, uh this would be under new business, request for decision, uh it's item number three two eight, uh. RFD signing up development agreement S two 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 nine six four. Whereas the developer is required to enter into a development agreement with the municipality as a conditional of approval for subdivision number. S two 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 nine six four, and. Whereas the development agreement has been prepared to include these items deemed necessary. By the municipality, including an engineered training plan, cleaning up ditches along Cedar Street. Road standard and construction, road recovery for future development, fronting. Or accessing the new road, installing the utilities and streetlights, uh the standard deems necessary by the municipality. Now therefore be a result that the RM Saint Andrews authorized signing of the development agreement with. Uh Atconon. Sing Dark and Bernice Con Gill upon payment of. Development and administrative charges, um Rayden, did you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, uh briefly, this was approved in twenty twenty-two, so it's definitely been a while. They've uh actually seeked a one-year additional extension of approval, which expires in September of this year. Uh this is the final requirement of their conditional approval, the development agreements, this creates. Uh a total of seven lots, but six new lots, uh four acres each, agricultural restricted, just off of Cedar Street. Um so just to kinda paint a picture, cuz it has been some time since this was approved by council. That's it.
Okay, any other guy, questions, concerns, comments? Uh seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor? Okay, we'll back that up, uh can I have a mover please? Councillor Dornboss, a secondary, councillor Slaker, uh once again, uh all in favor? Okay, this matter is carried. And this concludes our meeting for today. Uh. Okay.
Our information on this.
Oh, I I have a couple of comments on it.
Okay, that's uh sure, okay, we'll take a look at it, uh Red River Planning Report for the month of July, uh twenty twenty-five.
So so we see uh Red River Planning is doing better, uh permits are up. But what I'd like to to point out is uh. Is in the past, Saint Andrews would be in in uh. In fourth place for generating revenue. Uh and and now is is in second place out of this group behind. Uh West Saint Paul, but uh outperforming in raising revenue and. In uh the other RMs, so except for West Saint Paul, so that's a good indicator for us that uh. Uh we're starting to ramp up here in in Saint uh Andrews and getting some activity in all kinds of different areas in our.
Thank you for those uh comments, uh Mister CAO. Uh anyone else have anything to add? Okay, seeing none. Uh the next item on our list is adjournment, uh be a result that council of. Is during our special meeting at six twenty-five PM, can I have a mover please? Councillor Dornboss, seconded by. Council people for it. Uh all in favor? That's carried, that's me very much, everyone.